Friends and neighbors, welcome, especially to all the people who are joining us electronically. This is Monday, May 20th. This is the regular meeting of the City Council in the city of Waverly, Iowa. It is seven o'clock, and we are called to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the City Council, you have before you an agenda that is proposed. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I will move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Item D, approval of the minutes. Friends, you've got in front of you the minutes from May 6th, a regular meeting of the City Council. Is there anyone who would care to make a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Welcome back. Brady Wurger, our guest council person. It's good to have you, and we'll call on you at the end of the meeting in the event you have any comments.
Thank you.
This is the date, the time, and the place for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 budget amendment. The mayor and City Council will now entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. City Clerk, do you have, you received any written comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience who would like to make public comments about this Resolution 2486? I see no one rising. Then this public hearing is closed. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 24-86, a resolution approving amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We are amending the budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Should we not have a roll call vote?
I suppose we could, if it would make you happy, councilperson.
Before we do that, could do, maybe we could just explain why we do this process and, and maybe some of the expenses. It looked like most of this expense was the water treatment center.
I'll ask James to explain that.
Sure. And I'll let Valerie clarify if she needs to after this. So every year, we do a budget amendment. It's basically to get your books in order. That's the simplest way to put it. Oftentimes, we have revenue that comes in throughout the year that you can't account for until you do an amendment, so you can't utilize it. Or you have expenditures, whether it's a broken vehicle or a overrun of a cost in a project, that also has to be accounted for. This is not new taxes before the newspaper goes crazy. You're not taxing for more. You're not spending. This is money that exists today. You're putting it in the correct fiscal year. The largest part of this particular budget was due to our capital projects. A lot of it's a WPC project. It continues. You know, we can estimate completion times the best we can. Obviously, we've missed this one because it is not done yet. So you then have to estimate how much more is going to take to get this finished, and that's what we're trying to do as well. So if you have your bond proceeds come in this year versus the next year, that also is a huge shift. That's what we have here in front of us. That's why it's a substantial amount of money, but you're moving one to the other in the capital fund itself. So the money sitting there was already planned for this. We're putting it in the right fiscal year. And that's what you'll see throughout this entire process is mostly capital work, over 80% of it is for the actual items that should have been in one fiscal year. Revenue came in the other fiscal year. It was a timing issue with how the bonds were sold. Same thing will happen next year, most likely. Again, we're selling bonds. If they don't make it by July 1, they're in the right year. If they do, we'll be doing this next year. So you budget the best you can 18 months in advance. If there's things that come up, go down, we correct it in the final amendment so that we're compliant with our audit in fiscal '24. If there's anything specific you want to talk about or any items, I will tell you, everything you see through here is, come through council for approval. There was a project that was over. We've talked about it, and it's been approved, and we've listed why. So there should be nothing on here that's shocking. There should be nothing on here that's suspicious at all, because we have covered every single thing on here at one time or another through council before we would have approved it and spent it.
So we are neither raising nor lowering taxes, just putting things in the right box?
That's a great way to put it, sir.
Sounds like a job for an accountant.
That's why we have right there. That's exactly what we're doing.
Excellent question.
Good. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I just had two quick questions, and I apologize because I should remember what these are, but on page three, the Bartles Infrastructure, is that in the states?
Yes. As there was some gap, and we find this throughout the city at times, whoever approved this 20 years ago, they let someone stopgap short of a property line. Well, the new owner then cannot go on to somebody else's property to do that. It's in our reserve right away, and so we have extended pieces of that, so that it connects so they can then develop accordingly. And again, that goes back to it not being enforced forever ago. We deal with it now. We've had to do it multiple places throughout the city. That's one of them there in order to have that connect utilities, et cetera, and get that finished. Unfortunately, it will not be the last time we have to do that either, because there's quite a few pockets like that throughout the city.
And then my other question was on page six, the SRF reimbursement. Can you remind me what that is?
That's the WPC project. State Revolving Fund is SRF. That's where our funding is coming from, and every time we delay it, it pushes that out further to make the first payment, which we can't do until it is completed. Then we have the amount we can actually borrow ahead and know we're going to be paying off. In the meantime, we're paying interest on what's been drawn down, and the longer it goes, the more that is, and we will have discussion with the vendors at the end of this about how we're going to make that right. But that's what SRF is right now, State Revolving Fund.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? You appear ready to vote. Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Draykal?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That did pass unanimously. If you're keeping score at home, we have two council people who are not with us tonight. Brian Jones is out of the country.
Brent Jones.
Brent Jones, yes, sorry. And Tim is?
Absent.
Absent. Okay. Probably a school thing, keeping him out of the council. All right, let's move on to item two. This is the date, the time, and the place for a public hearing directing the sale of $1,765,000, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, general obligation bonds in Series 2024. The mayor and City Council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Resolution 2487, a resolution directing sale of $1,765,000, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, general obligation bonds in Series 2024. Madam Clerk, have you received any written comments or oral? Anyone present here, would you like to make public comments? Please identify yourself and good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. We've set in front of you our recommendation letter, as you have seen in the past. This evening, we are recommending that you would award to Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, for the $1,765,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2024, at a true interest rate of 3.6695%. We did receive four bids, and you can see what those bids are. The revision of the original is just because you set a pre-levy resolution in your fiscal year '25 budget. The interest rates today came in at a 4%. We were estimating they could come in as high as 5%, so we had to adjust principal up. So we take principal from the last maturity and move it up to the first maturity so that we can hit that mark of what you levied. That's, that's required by your bonding attorney, so. As part of this, we had a very nice conversation with Moody's Rating Investor Services. The city has been reaffirmed at the AA3 rating. They want to talk about, you know, that you have strong rever, strong reserves and a very nice average income and property wealth within the city, and that's great. We've talked about this in the past. One of the primary challenges is that you have some contingent liability risk with owning the hospital, although you do not make financial contribution to that. That will show up always as a contingent liability as long as you own that facility. One thing we remind you, if you start to decline your cash below like a 30% cash reserve level in the general fund and across most of the funds, that's when we could be looking at, you know, potential downgrades. They've given us lots of information in here, talking about how good the cash balances have been the last couple of years, whole lot of information. The state of Iowa in general has good governance, because you are a body who gets to make your own decisions, like your budget amendment this evening, and Moody's finds that to be a very positive thing when they're looking at ratings. So we, we are appreciative of that. Your scorecard indicated rating, I do want to say, is a AA2, but in committee, the assigned rating is the AA3, which is one notch below. And again, in our conversations with the analysts, that has to do with the contingent liability of the hospital, so. Going back to the last page of our handout, we do break down all the interest rates for you. Again, Northland Securities was in conjunction with First Bank here in Waverly, Iowa, so we'd like to see that local participation. That's fantastic. Those were 4%. We had a couple of bidders bid 5%, and then TD Securities, who was in third place, also bid that 4% interest rate. The final debt service schedule is on the back page, and this final debt service schedule, you can call these bonds in after June 1st of 2031. So we've got a 10-year maturity on this bond schedule, and after 2031, if interest rates are lower, we could look at a possible refinance to save you money on interest. That's also a take, a date or after that date. You would be able to call the bonds in whole or in part, meaning that if you had money ahead and you wanted to pay those down, you could do that at that time as well, so. I'd answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend passage of the next resolution on your agenda.
Do you want to discuss the premium quickly, Maggie? You know, there's some questions about discounts and premiums, the underwriters, and so...
Correct, yes. So the premium today is about $30,000, just under $30,000, and, and we've seen premiums in the past. And what a premium is, is the interest rate is higher on the coupons. Each individual maturity is at 4%, but the municipal bond market is not at a 4%. It is somewhere in the threes, mid-threes. So to be able to resell the bonds, because Northland will resell to investors like mutual funds, insurance companies, individual investors like maybe you or I in our own portfolios, they believe that the market wants a 4% interest rate, but you're willing to pay money upfront to get that 4%. And so they'll pay you a premium to buy down that true interest cost. It's been quite a number of years. We plan for a discount, meaning they could take money out of the deal, and it's been quite a number of years since we've actually had a discount on our bonds. Typically, we've been seeing premiums on these bonds, even in these high interest rates, you know, higher than what we've seen in the past, we're still seeing small premiums. I think a few years back, we saw 400 and 500,000 dollar premiums, and now we're to that $29,000 premium rate, because interest rates, we have to close that gap a little bit between interest rates and where the market is. But we're real happy with this. We really believed, you know, last fall, interest rates were over 4% in that TIC, so I think timing this spring has been great, and that comes with some good economic news, right? There's, there's good things coming out based on the economy, and that's what's driving the market to these little bit lower rates than we were anticipating, so. We hope that the Federal Reserve starts to move interest rates down. That should also make a difference going into, to next year.
So that's why you see a different amount. We're actually receiving more than we were borrowing initially for it, and that is not money that is repaid. That is money that we will keep and utilize accordingly going forward on an overage or other project or pay back down debt with, but that is not accounting against our capacity.
Correct.
And it is not, again, repaid. That is not what we would pay back. We would be paying back the $1,765.
Yes.
So, so the revision is basically moving, it looks like, $20,000 from the last payment to the first?
Correct.
Payment?
Yep, and that's something that we have to do, because in your budget process, you said we're going to levy in fiscal year '25 at this amount. And that amount actually was like $230,000, I think, or $226,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. Well, when we, and we did that projection at 5%, because that's really where we were seeing rates in the fall and into the early winter months, but now that we have the bid rates today at 4%, that made that principal and interest payment much smaller. It made it 205,000, and the bonding attorney says you can't collect 226,000 of property taxes and not pay a principal and interest payment of approximately 226,000. So what we do is we take some of the debt, the final maturity should have been 220,000. We just take 20,000 out, move it up top, and that helps us get closer to that amount that you levied, and that's what you have to do by law, just because you can't really have overages in the debt service fund, if it's possible.
So if I'm, I'm looking at the second bidder down, which is Bernardi Securities, which has a true interest rate that's kind of lower than the revised?
Correct. But it's because we, because original interest rate is what was bid, and the original interest rate is what won the deal.
Okay.
And then we make a revision. It's a very good point. We have to make the revision after we know who the winning bidder is, and again, it's a time and a place, just like a construction bid. And so once we hit that 11 o'clock mark this morning, that was ours, and then we have to look at it and analyze it. So again, actually, had Bernardi's been the winning bidder, let's just say Northland wasn't bidding, and Bernardi's had won, that interest rate would have gone up as well, because again, situational, we may have had to move some interest on that as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Good questions. And we... They were fun about mid-afternoon, as we were working on all of this.
So Maggie, just for people who are keeping score at home, Moody's is an internationally recognized organization that rates the fiscal strength of governments, colleges, universities, businesses, and all sorts of institutions.
Correct.
They're kind of the standard. And even though we are a little weak right now on our general fund, which is only one of our many funds.
Yes.
This institution, Moody's, is saying that this city's fiscal position overall is very strong.
Very strong. AAA is the highest rating you can get in the land, then you have a AA1, AA2, and then AA3. So you fall into that AA category, and then credit worthiness in Iowa, there's an A1, and A2, and A3. So there's, you're, you're really right there in the middle, and for a town the size of Waverly, that's really good. And I also want to point out in Iowa, there are only 13 AAA credits statewide between cities, counties, school districts, community colleges. So just to put that into perspective, they're also comparing you globally, they say, which they're comparing you against other markets of similar size, school districts, colleges, cities in the U.S. that have the same wealth indicators, have the same, you know, census type information, debt profiles, and so really, they're putting you in that. They really believe that you're strong, and I think you could actually move up if at some point in time, the hospital was not a contingent liability. I, I do anticipate that that rating would probably move up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? In that case, would anyone care to make a motion? Oh, I got to close the hearing. Thank you. That closes this hearing. I would ask if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-87, a resolution directing sale of $1,765,000, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, general obligation bonds, Series 2024.
Second.
Any discussion among council members?
I guess the, our just under 1% interest rate is probably never going to be seen again.
It's going to be a long time. Maybe by 2031, when we can refinance it, we'll see that again.
All right.
It's going to be a long time, yeah.
I'd just like to thank all the city staff that worked so hard to get this done and continue to do a great job of managing our finances.
Yeah, and thanks to Maggie for coming and trying to make sense of it for us. It's very complicated, and I think even though it was hard to make the decisions we had to make for the budget, it sounds like it's those difficult decisions that helped put us in a good position. It also makes me wonder what's going to happen in the future if, if local municipalities start to lose more control of how we can spend our money, if the legislature makes, continues to make decisions like that, you know? How will that affect our, what, our independence financially and our rating? But, no, I think it's, we're in good shape. That's good.
We talked about that with the Moody's during the call. They're well aware of what legislation is done in Iowa and some limitations on our levis that are going to occur. They're aware of the decisions we made that kept us financially viable, which is why you see this rating, and I think had we pushed harder, we would have had the AA2. We were just fine sitting at AA3. We have a much larger, hopefully, bond going next year, pool class, things like that. I'd much rather have an upgrade on that, and I think we'll get it, so. But they are well aware, like I said, they know us better than we know ourselves sometimes. I honestly believe coming in, they have our rating figured. We're confirming what they believe, and that's the discussion at hand, so. Very pleased that, I know of a few peers at least that have been downgraded the same time of year, and so coming in, that was a good surprise that they said we should have been upgraded, actually, and I think in the future, we will be.
I would just like to point out that even though this isn't 1%, the interest rate that we have is a very reasonable interest rate, and I think that the fact that we have worked so hard to make sure that we keep our reserves up and that we keep our, our bond rating the way it is and make sure that we're very conscious of how we budget, actually saved us a lot of money, because we're not paying higher interest when we're doing these projects and... So, you know, it, it all comes back to responsible financial management, and the fact that we can get a, a very good interest rate like this means that, you know, we're being rewarded for being good financial managers, good financial stewards.
Anything else? Carla?
Draykal?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes. That passed unanimously. Thank you. Item three, this is the date, the time, and the place for a public hearing for the review and approval of the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs of construction and installation of the all-inclusive playground at Cedar River Park. The mayor and City Council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. That is, Resolution 2489, a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs of construction and installation of the all-inclusive playground. Carla, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would rise to speak to this Resolution 2489? I see no one rising. This public hearing is now closed. City Council, anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 24-89, a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs of construction and installation of the all-inclusive playground.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, friends?
It's exciting.
It's exciting. We see it happen, yeah?
It is.
We've been playing it for a while.
Yeah, and there was quite a baseball tournament down in the, that area this weekend, with many, many, many people there. This would have been great to have, all-inclusive, that's super important. Every one of our citizens should be able to use our equipment, so I'm really excited about this.
I think it's something that we, as a community, will be really proud of also. I think that people that come into town for whatever, sports events or whatever, that they will see this as something we have. I think that tells a lot about our community.
Anything else, council? Are you ready to vote? Carla?
Myers?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Draykal?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item 3A, Resolution 2490, a resolution awarding the contract for bid package number one for the all-inclusive playground to Mott Construction of Sumner, Iowa, and awarding contract for bid package number two for the all-inclusive playground to Soft Surfaces of Petrolia, Ontario. Anyone like to make a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 24-90, a resolution awarding contract for bid package number one for the all-inclusive playground to Mott Construction of Sumner, Iowa, for the bid amount of $148,000, and awarding contract for bid package number two for the all-inclusive playground to Soft Surfaces of Petrolia, Ontario, for the bid amount of $135,000.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion, council? So I understand the equipment itself has been ordered and should arrive late August, so these are the contracts to put that safe surface on, so if kids fall, they bounce, and to install the equipment, which obviously has to be done locally. Karen, did you have anything you wanted to add? I saw you reached for the mic.
I was just going to confirm that, yes, you are correct. The equipment has been ordered, should be here by the end of August, and besides the kids bouncing, everything else feels correct, as you said.
Thank you. Any other discussion, council? This is a roll call vote. Carla, would you help us out?
Sure. Myers?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Draykal?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Thank you. Item F, public comments on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. If it's not on the agenda, but you would still rise to speak to it, now is the time. I see no one rising. We'll move on to item G, the consent calendar. Council, you've got a bunch of items here put before you. Is there anyone caring to make a motion for the entire calendar?
I'll move... Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I couldn't get my words out. I'm sorry. It's all right.
I hear no discussion. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We moved down, that passed unanimously. We moved down to the regular business. If there's anyone who wants to speak to something that is on the agenda, please rise towards the microphone before we get to that item, so I know that you want to speak, so it's easier for me to call on you. And we will turn to Resolution 2491. This is item one, a resolution approving a contract with Maxfield Research and Consulting of Roseville, Minnesota, to prepare a comprehensive housing needs analysis for the city of Waverly. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-91, a resolution approving a contract with Maxfield Research and Consulting of Roseville, Minnesota, to prepare a comprehensive housing needs analysis for the city of Waverly for a cost of $17,500 plus estimated travel costs of $900.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think I would just like to point out, if I have this correctly, that one of the things that developers look for is a professionally done housing study like this, because they need to know what types of housing to construct, what, you know, would, would, would be profitable for them, what's going to be in the market, what the market is like. I know we did a housing study a few years ago that was a little bit less, I mean, it was a little bit more of an overview than maybe down in the weeds that we want to get with on this, but a housing study like this is really essential to provide potential developers with a roadmap for, for what they can develop here in, in town. So this is not just spending money because we like to see studies, but this is something that will be a real tool for us to help with our economic development and, and our housing issues.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think previous studies led directly to development, whether it was the historic lofts or developments that Bartles pursued, the Red Fox, so, you know, this is, they did a nice job, same companies who did a nice job in the past.
Excellent. More discussion, Council? This is a roll call vote. Are you ready? Carla?
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow? Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item two. This is the third and final reading of Ordinance 1143, an ordinance amending subsection 59 of the Waverly Code of Ordinances, section 105.4.10. Is there a motion?
I will move approval of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1143, an ordinance amending subsection 59 of the Waverly Code of Ordinances, section 105.4.10.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Myers. Any discussion? This is our no parking.
Yep, over by Strong.
Yep, and this is our third reading, so after this, we're done.
Finally put this one to bed.
Yeah, finally got this one down. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Carla?
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow? Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which takes us to item three. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1144, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 58, that is, taxi cabs and limousines. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1144, the, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 58, taxi cabs and limousines.
Second.
Thank you. So, Chapter 58 is no longer applies, as the state has taken all those regulations over, so this is us making smaller government by deleting a whole chapter. Any other discussion? None? Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item four, Resolution 2488. This is a resolution approving amendment number four to the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Rochester, Minnesota, for the Water Pollution Control Facility Improvements 2020 Project, and approving invoice number 50920-29. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 24-88, a resolution approving amendment number four to the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Rochester, Minnesota, for additional construction phase engineering services at the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 Project, for the estimated fee of $75,000, and approving invoice number 50920-29 from WHKS and Co., is it corporation or company, in the amount of $31,458.74.
Thank you. Second, received. And any discussion?
It's basically just related to delays in the project, correct?
Yeah, I, some days don't know if it's ever gonna end, but we are close. I'm just, you wanna give a brief description of where we're sitting? I think summer should be it.
Well, we have one item left for substantial completion. Weather kinda delayed some of it with the fieldwork, clean out a digester. But other than that, it's coming along good. I'd say we're at 96%. I mean, the punch list is really getting knocked out fairly quick. You're getting down there on many items that you haven't completed, so. Had good progress actually last month or two towards the tail end here.
And it looks like we're well over our contingency funds, and so it's, you said earlier you're gonna be having some discussions with the contractor about all of this and whether we can get reimbursed? Is that even possible?
Well, we're gonna see how friendly it is. We will get reimbursed somehow, one way or another. It's just a matter of how we're right now eating our reserves a little bit, which we knew we were gonna have to at some point in time. We have enough to do it. And then we will have a discussion to close out this contract. We still have a fairly sizable amount sitting in retainings that we will not release until we have satisfaction of what this will and won't be. We'll work with WHKS and if need to, legal system to get this done. But we don't have a choice. The delays have been tremendous, and that has then cost us more in construction management costs and possible interest in the SRF, which should have been done a year and a half ago. All that is legitimate and documented, and I feel confident that we will get a portion of this back.
So, I know that last time, there was a change order. I asked, is this going to be the last one? And he said, well, there'll probably be at least one more. So, I'm going to ask, is this going to be the last one?
We have one more coming.
Got to finish out punch lists, quantities, everything at the end.
Okay.
So, there'll be at least one more.
At least one more.
We'll continue with that answer for a little while.
Right.
All right, any other discussion? You appear to me to be ready to vote. Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to Resolution 2476. A resolution approving the vacation and authorizing conveyances of certain right-of-way parcels to adjoining property owners, including the city of Waverly, as set forth on Exhibit A of the resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-76, a resolution approving and authorizing the vacation of certain parcels that had been conveyed or dedicated to the city of Waverly, which are deemed to be of no benefit to the city of Waverly, and authorizing the conveyance of said parcels to the adjoining property owners identified as set forth in Exhibit A as the vacating instrument.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions?
So, at the last meeting when we discussed this, I'd raised some concerns about just the lack of detail with what had happened in the conversations between the city attorney and these parties. Then we had, we did receive some information from two of the citizens involved about their concerns. Councilwoman Myers and I met with Mr. Werger last week to sort of clarify what our concerns were and get some more information and background from him. And, and I'm sorry, Billy, weren't here before the meeting. I tried to look for you to chat about it. But I guess I came away from that meeting thinking that we would, for tonight's meeting, and it might have not been enough time to do that, but to get copies of any agreements that were signed by the two private individuals affected by these vacations, and a little more information about how we were gonna be able to trace back those conversations in the future. I was concerned about the lack of a paper trail, especially when there might be disputes among property owners. For instance, if the property gets sold, how will future owners know what the previous owner agreed to and who's in charge of maintaining these properties, et cetera? And I don't really see that. And so, I don't know if that's in progress or what's happening to create more of a paper trail. We've had repeated episodes, as long as I've been on council, of where staff are digging through old files, looking for things, and it just seems like it would be nice to have it retrievable somewhere. So, just curious about whether that's in process and whether we're gonna get to see that.
So, the process, what we did is, the main issues were the ones with the alleys, that we're sharing alleys and sharing driveways.
Yeah.
And they also had utilities within most of those rightaways. So, there was enough concerns on the folks that were in those positions that we decided to remove all of those except for one, just because if they wanna do that and move forward with that, it's gonna take some more effort. I think it's gonna take some more discussion and some more clarification. Beyond that, the other ones, I didn't think there were very many that were of any, I mean, most folks were very strong about wanting to get maybe the alley that's in the yard or the ones that nobody's really disputing, and they agreed with having those. You know, we talked about the fact that, you know, I have notes about how people called me or how people consented, what people did. We didn't do complete agreements with those things. We haven't done that in the past. We basically just wrote it down. If somebody comes to me and says, we really didn't wanna do that, I guess we'd have to deal with that, but we haven't had that happen in the past. So, the ones we kept are the ones that we think are the more clear examples of where we can get rid of rightaways that we don't need or don't want. And I think we've got it down to the ones that are here are clear with what they want, I think, based on my conversations in the past. There's 62 of them, or 63 of them. We did not do exact agreements. We did letters that we sent to them. We had folks respond to us by email, by phone, by coming to see me. And I feel pretty confident that those folks, in fact, some of them said, I thought we're gonna be done by now. When are we gonna get our deeds? So, it, I think what this has done is try to limit it to what this code section allows, and that's where we really don't want the rightaways. And historically, those rightaways are over on Fifth Street Northwest and some others, where there are historical uses of those. I think we have to do a better job of probably making sure everybody understands and maybe having an agreement between those folks if they ever decide that they wanna do that. And maybe it's not the best thing to try to push them into it if they don't wanna do it. And that's kinda why we got to the point where people were kinda feeling like, maybe we really don't wanna do this, and so we didn't wanna just push it through.
I have a procedural question. With these properties that are currently owned by the city, will you actually be issuing a formal deed for that property?
What happens is, there's no deeds that are gonna be done for anybody, because they're gonna take this Exhibit A, and they're gonna use the legal descriptions and the property owner that are identified, and they are gonna create a parcel on the county level. And so, there'll be a parcel that'll show up in Beacon and the, that they will get a parcel that says half of the alley adjacent to you, or they'll have some of the same description we have. The county went through all these descriptions and approved that description to create a separate parcel.
Okay.
Well, we've talked about that in the future, people could use the multi-lot agreement that we have often worked with in other situations. And in fact, I've worked on that and think that we can put together something that if somebody's interested in that, we can provide a document for them to use without having to do a survey, without having to spend the money to do a survey to combine their existing residential lot with that alley parcel.
But what, what proof do they have that they actually own that half a parcel or, you know, strip of land or?
This Exhibit A will be recorded, just like a deed would be recorded?
Okay, so these would be recorded at the courthouse?
The clerk certifies that it would be approved at this meeting and that it would, we did the notice and had the public hearing for the public.
Okay.
And then this would be an actual recorded document that would be probably referenced in anybody's abstract if they were to include that parcel within the description.
That's a part that was missing, and we talked about this two weeks ago, because it wasn't mentioned about getting these transfers recorded. And I was thinking, how on earth is anyone going to prove that they actually own this piece of land, should they want to sell it, when all that there is is a conversation between them and the city attorney that may have happened 15 years ago?
So. Yeah, that's not what we're relying upon. It's actually a recorded document.
Okay.
It'll show up in the abstracts when, obviously, those parcels have to be added to the abstract. So, if you own a home and then you get the half alley, the next time your abstract's brought to date, the abstractor would probably ask and say, you should probably have that in, because it's adjacent to your house. I mean, if somebody wants to combine it.
So, probably, or, I mean, who's responsible for that, then?
Well, they're responsible for doing that if they're gonna, somebody has to do it to, if you're gonna sell your house, that's where you get down to, how does your, does your Realtor know you have a half an alley? That's something that helps. Does your lawyer that's reading the abstract? Is somebody looking at Beacon to see that there's a parcel next to your parcel that has your name on it? And those are the things that, in, there's, quite a while ago, when Beacon has really helped this process alone, you didn't have that happen. There were some problems like that. There were some surprises that people weren't conveying those extra documents. The way it's done now, it's really hard to miss that to some extent, because the abstract should be looking at it, the lawyers who are doing the abstract are doing the examination. I know that when I was doing title opinions, I would look at the Beacon, look at the property around it, look at the lines around it, to make sure there weren't any things like this, because that happened from time to time. You know, they got extra seven feet from the neighbor because their garage was over the edge. You wanna make sure that you see those things, and I think those things are happening because of the accessibility of the maps that people can look at when they're doing these jobs. So, I, it, we, I've tried to tell people when I've talked to them about the idea that this is a parcel that's gonna be next to your other parcel, and if you wanna combine it, there's ways to do that, in order to combine those. And obviously, if you're gonna consider them together for usage or setbacks, you definitely have to do it, because you have to have either the multi-lot agreement or the plating around the whole thing. We feel like when you're giving somebody a half an alley, it makes sense to allow them to use the multi-lot agreement, because it really can't be used for much of anything else. There's nobody else that's adjacent to it, other than the lot behind them in some situations. So, I think it makes sense then, 'cause I know that I looked at a lot of, even in Breamer County, that some of those lots that were given to people from these alleys that we 've vacated in the past, they just added them to the parcel themselves. Now, they're not doing it. So, things have changed from what it was like maybe five or 10 years ago, and now the current folks at the courthouse think there has to be a separate parcel for each one of those alley pieces. So, it, I'd like to have them just add it to the property that they already own, because that worked pretty well, because they had the descriptions matched together. I think it's something that's commonly done, you know, like I said, I've talked to other cities that have done this, and they're offering it up, and if you don't want it, you don't have to take it. If you take it, there are some things that you may have to take responsibility for yourself.
Do they know that? I mean, is there, maybe given, you said that they all received a letter. Does the letter point some of these things out that they may wanna combine it and that it can't be included for setbacks?
I said that they would get the parcel, they would be, deeded the parcel through this documentation. You know, some people asked about it. I would explain it to them. I would provide them with information. Tried to do that as best I could. And we can still do that. In fact, we've talked about doing a post-letter to say, now that you have your parcel, here's some suggestions. So, we're talking about doing that. I think that was a good suggestion.
I think that would be an excellent idea, because there's a lot of confusion in the property owners on just what exactly they're getting and what they can do with it and what happens there.
And where does that letter live?
Well.
Where is that, then?
That would build imagination.
I know. But I mean, once it's sent and you retire, where is that, where is that letter in case of dispute?
Well, we're gonna send, we're gonna send a basic informational letter that would be the same, and we would, we'd keep those, I mean, in our electronic filings, just like we used to have file cabinets with folders, now we have computers with those kind of folders. And so, we've tried to document that now for purposes of what we've been doing. There's a lot of those kind of electronic stuff in the folder for this vacation project.
I would echo that follow-up letter. I would respectfully request that that happen.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. We are definitely planning on doing that.
And can you clarify, so is Beacon recognized from a legal status as sort of the information hub?
So, it is, because the county works with Beacon, and they have, their GIS person will change things on Beacon and make different changes. Because I found errors in the past, and then I just caught, I just sent an email and said, you should look at this, because I found these documents that don't show that that is properly done. And so, we've made changes like that in the past. And they, everybody just wants to get it right. So, we point out that if there really wasn't a deed for this, or there wasn't, there's discrepancies, we work it out between the folks at the attorney's office and the GIS person.
So, I guess I'm thinking about, mostly because it has been a challenge for us here to understand this, and we're on our third or fourth discussion of it. So, like, let's say 15 or 20 years from now, if someone doesn't have their own documentation, you know, if there's questions about what property they're selling or what agreement they might have with the neighbor, whatever, are they able to go to Beacon and say, see, it says right here, so this is?
Well, that isn't necessarily proof. The proof is the fact that there's a recorded document that has their name on it in the property description, and there's a resolution that approved the transfer. property description, and there's a resolution that approved the transfer. That's the thing that makes it a deed. It makes it a transfer, a legal transfer. So that will show up if they search, you know, the property. Again, you have to see that it's next to the other property, so that's one of those things that, they have to know that they have an alley piece, and when you do look at the map, it shows, it's very clear that those parcels do show up.
So you're saying that you have documentation somewhere of your conversations with the private, I'm not talking about where the city is giving money, or giving the land to the city, right? But where there's private people who are now going to take ownership of these, you're saying you have documentation of your conversations with them? Plus, you have documentations when it's two neighbors who agree to, like, parcel like 40 and 41, you know, where they're going to share this driveway, and it's, do you have documentation of all of that?
Yes. Well, what I've done is, I haven't dictated a whole thing about the whole conversation. I've said, I got a call from so-and-so on such-and-such a date, and they said they would like to have the parcel. And that's what I've done, or I've received an email, or somebody stopped in and talked to me. I tried to make notes on my spreadsheet for that.
So that's all in the file that we'll be able to access if we need to access in the future? Okay. And so you've pulled the three areas that there was not agreement?
There was hesitation, I mean, I call it...
So it's like, 15, 16, 19, 20, 22, and then...
Forty-eight, six.
Forty-six through forty-eight?
Forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight. I pulled forty-eight because I never received response, and I didn't even want to move into the vacation aspect of it.
Yeah.
We can do it in the future if somebody requests it. And the same thing can happen with folks that, and they've come to the city before, because you'll see places where they have a turn driveway or something, or one has said the other one doesn't want to have any part of it. So we've done this before as a city, and I would rather have them be on the same page completely. I think it's fair to ask them to, because it's more than just being adjacent to one another. They're sharing something. So I think it's fair to say, we should require more of that and make sure they're in agreement.
Yes, that was my concern.
Ms. Mayor, excuse me, if I may, I might suggest that each of those letters get stored with that address file electronically, and that way then they would be easily...
Easily accessible, retrievable.
Yes.
That's an excellent idea.
We can move things from, because I, we don't, we probably won't move everything I have in there, because I've had drafts of stuff for each particular parcel. We can move the things we need to move into the address file.
So you have a file for each city address, like correspondence or issues that have come up?
Mostly permits and easements and things like that, but I think that would fit perfectly into those files.
We still have a lot of...
That's a good idea.
...paper files on properties like that. And so what we're trying to do is, we go along, is anything new coming in, we want to make sure they're electronically done, and so we can add it to those electronic, we can add these properties to that electronic file.
Okay, thanks, I didn't know that was...
Any other discussion, council? You have this item in front of you, are you ready to vote? Carla?
Drinkow.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to Item 6, which is the first reading of Ordinance 1145, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of 801 and 803, 7th Avenue Northwest, from R3 Residential District to R2 Residential District, and amending the Waverly zoning map as provided by this ordinance, and setting a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1145, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of 801 through 803, 7th Avenue Northwest, from R3 Residential District to R2 Residential District, and amending the Waverly zoning map as provided by this ordinance, and setting June 3, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the council chambers at Waverly City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none, you appear ready to vote. Carla?
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow. Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to Resolution 2492. This is a resolution approving the change order number three for the library addition and renovation project. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 24-92, a resolution approving change order number three for the library addition and renovation project to Huff Contracting incorporation of Waterloo, Iowa, for increased amount of $3,605 for cost-related miscellaneous changes throughout construction to this point.
Second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion, any questions?
Well, I have to ask my common question. Is this the last one, or is there going to be more?
Director Meyer, would you like to address the council?
There could be more.
Any other questions or discussion? You appear ready to vote. Carla?
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow. Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to the first reading of Ordinance 1146, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning for 1901 and 1903 and 1951 and 1953, of 3rd Street Southwest, from R3 Residential District to R2 Residential District, and amending the Waverly zoning map and setting a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I will move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1146, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning for 1901, dash, subscript 1903, and 1951, subscript 1953, 3rd Street Southwest, from R3 Residential District to R2 Residential District, and amending the Waverly zoning map and setting June 3, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the city council chambers of Waverly City Hall, as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Is there any...
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think a little background would be helpful. We just, we've got something here at our desk, and we got here too.
Okay, these are...
And I don't know if anyone's ready to speak to this, or...
I didn't see anyone rise to it. These are four units that would best be described as condominiums, and they are, they're seeking redress from, their homeowner's insurance is treating them as if they were a great big development, not four units, and raising the prices and lowering the payments, and so they would like to have these re-zoned as if they were four single-family homes, so they can each get their own insurance, not a group insurance, based on appearing to be a giant condo complex.
And I'll just, I add that it's, they're R2, because they can have attached drawings in an R2. With the R3, it's really very, I mean, we're not changing anything, they're not changing anything about the way it's set up. It comes close to complying with all of the R2. I think there was, when they were built, they were, I think there's, two structures are within less than seven and a half feet, and right now we require seven and a half feet, but when they were built, they were, it was five feet, so it was okay at that time. So that's really the only discrepancy in changing it from an R3 to an R2. The use doesn't change. This gives them individual ownership of the property that they've plotted. They do have some, they do have some easements for access, because they still have the same drives coming in from each side that they may use. So we're okay with it. We feel like if it makes, if it helps them out on their costs, that's okay. It's really not changing the use, and nobody there really had any concerns about it in their neighborhood.
Okay. We have a chance to help out some of our neighbors. Any other discussion? Questions? Carla?
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which takes us to Item 9. This is the first reading of Ordinance 1147, an ordinance amending Waverly Code Section 105.4.10 by adding subsection 60. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1147, an ordinance amending Waverly Code Section 105.4.10 by subsection 70.
Second?
Second.
Subsection 60.
I'm sorry, yeah, my eyes are, subsection 60.
Colonel, sir, you seem to want to speak to this?
Yes.
Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and then, you've got five minutes.
Okay. Randy Meyer, I live at 2107 West Breamer Avenue.
Welcome.
And they are, I have opposition to this ordinance. What's taking place is they want to put paint my curb in front of my house, yep, for the whole length of that city block, because of the people across the street from me, the apartment house. I all agree, it is a parking problem. I fully agree, but why should I be penalized for the people across the street? That's my opposition. They're the ones that are parking on both sides of the street. Ask the mail people whether they like it. There's times they can't get to the mailbox on the other side of the street. It's going to devalue my property. Look it up on the internet. If there's no parking on my side of the street, it's going to devalue my property. And if we're going to go by fairness, then let's go through every block in the city of Waverly and make one side of the street, no parking. Fair's fair. That's my point of view. There are able, other ways to correct that, put up signs, no overnight parking. It'll eliminate a lot. When I first moved there 31 years ago, we didn't have the problem we have right now. There were people that lived in there, they have garage spaces. Each apartment has a garage. They also have driveways. They could park in. I know there's one person that rents an apartment, he's got four cars and a motorcycle. That's where half the battle is. I've called for police on parking, it's a snow route. I've called when they're sitting there, why aren't they not getting ticketed? I get a comeback, I got a call back this last winter from a police officer, that said, well, that's the overnight's police job, to put a no parking sign or ticket on the vehicle. And he says, and then we need to notify those people first. That's the landlord's responsibility, to let them know that they can't park there on a snow night. They missed, when city staff has other things to do than to plow streets, so if they don't get plowed, then they rake all the snow off the vehicle, and they go to work or wherever they go, and then the street never gets finished unplowing. That's another complaint that I have. The other thing, I heard something tonight about not following the city ordinance. I believe when that apartment house was built, I think driveways are supposed to be concrete. Those are gravel. They have cement approach, but the driveway itself is gravel. It was never enforced.
You're correct.
It's never enforced. So I'm going to be a butt-head, if you want to put it simple. I'd like to see that enforced. If we're going to go and penalize me, so when I have family members come to visit me, they can't park on the street, because the other side's going to be full anyway, it always is. But if you make it overnight, no overnight parking, I think would help make the mess disappear. That's just my voice, so that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak to Ordinance 1147? Please identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
I'm Nick Demuth. I live on 2120 West Breamer Avenue, so right next to the apartment complex. So making the road across the street from me where there'd be no parking, the other downside of that would mean that my side of the street is going to be filled with cars all the way to the end of the curb. I do agree there's an issue there with the traffic. I do think there is actually a small benefit to that, because people go through there 35, 40 miles an hour on their phones, and that actually makes them slow down a little bit. You know, it's really only an inconvenience for about, you know, five seconds while you let a car go by and you go through. The other thing I wanted to mention is, as he had mentioned, they do have more space where they could be parking in their parking lots. And with this change, you know, then I'm going to have people in front of my house where I'm, you know, if we have visitors over, we'd like to be able to have a place to park, or I'd like to be able to park in front of my house. I also want to mention, too, that that property with the apartment complexes, in front of that place, there's 40, 50 feet to the road, somewhere around there, where that, I don't think it would take that much to actually take a little section of that road and to make it into parking. I know that would probably be on the landowners, but there's plenty of room there where a parking area could be made. Or I also think that a lot of these people could park on the side streets. I mean, I just would like, I don't want to see it where we have cars lined up all the way down to the end of the road from this change. That's all I have to say on it, but appreciate you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to rise to speak about Ordinance 1147? Frau, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Yeah. I'm Ivan Loesch, and I live on the street that is in danger, somewhat exaggerated, to have its parking permission taken away from it. And while what I'm going to say is not maybe of major significance, it does make a difference, especially, for example, in the wintertime, when people come, maybe this sounds a little selfish, but it does apply to several people. In the wintertime, when companies come to remove the snow, there's no way that they cannot park on our side of the street when they're dealing with our houses for a considerable amount of time till they can clear the snow. And the driveways, and they can't park in the driveways because they're clearing the driveways. So that is a bit of a problem for me if I look ahead to the winter. And then, as of late, I've been having some, not health difficulties, but movement difficulties. I just came out of a longer rehab stay in the Bartles', and there are going to be a number of people, not just for me, I suppose, who are going to need to come to my house to do therapy and things like that. And if they have, where are they going to park if they can't? I mean, not everybody can park in the driveway, especially if there's more person there than one. And so that worries me a little bit. How are they going to do that? Yes. And the other point is that if you come up to the street and look, there are, in my estimation, ample parking possibilities for the houses on the other side of the street. There are three garages there, and if you go around the side alongside the pizza ranch, there's also property where those people could park conceivably. I'm just concerned about, lots of people pull into their driveways, and that makes perfect sense, but numbers of people come who are performing services, and who are visiting, who just park in front of the house rather than in the driveway, because I suppose they could be trained not to do that, but it takes away a kind of personalization also, which maybe is a minor consideration, but I don't think it's totally unimportant. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Loesch. Is there anyone else who would like to rise to speak to Ordinance 1147? Please identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
My name is Brad Niedert, I live at 2113 West Breamer. I feel that me being punished for someone else's parking problem is not my problem. It should be addressed to the people that are having the problem. I have a driveway with, if it's two cars, I use it. When I have company coming, they park in the street, that's the only place they have. I do not feel my company should have to walk two blocks because of somebody else parking in front of my house, or across the street from my house and not be able to park in front of my own house. What I'm going to ask is, how would you guys feel if you were in my place? You'll ask yourselves that. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would rise to speak to Ordinance 1147? I see none, so we will move on. We have a motion and a second. Discussion among the council. What you got?
I'm curious how it was decided which side of the street we were going to...
Um, I'm curious, um, how it was decided which side of the street we were gonna declare no parking. I know we talked about it at the meeting, but I can't, I'm just curious why the decision was made.
I think, and here again, Brent and I emailed back and forth a couple of times on this, and his suggestion was that there were more parking spaces on the north side of the street than there were on the south side of the street. So I think that's why that was done. It was purely a numbers situation.
Yeah, do you want to answer that? That's fine. We're gonna be a little liberal on the rules today.
Yes. If you go, technically that's true, there's more space on their side of the street from their driveway that they use to the, to the curb to the east, okay? But you have to, there's two sections for mailboxes in there that they're not supposed to park in front of. So if you take those two sections out of there, parking spaces out of there, there is no extra space.
Are there mailboxes on the south side of the street, just the north side of the street?
I have them between, Brad and I, between our driveways, we have, each have a mailbox in there. They're this far apart.
And is it yellow in front of that, or in front of any of the mailboxes on the other side?
No, there's no, yeah, no parking, but it's just courtesy, you're never supposed to park in front of the mailboxes.
Right, right.
It's either that or you're not gonna get your mail, one or the other. That's just how it works.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm interested, I guess, in the police chief's comments or thoughts about,
Overnight?
Overnight parking. We've had that conversation in other parts of town too. What are the pros and cons?
I don't know if it addresses the concerns that council brought up. I think the reason why, um, the council member brought up was from like, when school buses come through, it was the restriction during busy times. So, I mean, yes, we can certainly look at overnight, restricted overnight parking, but I think it's a safety concern as a roadway construction, is what, uh, I remember Brad talking about.
Can I speak again? Uh, one comment on that, during the day, there are not hardly anybody parking.
Come up to the mic.
It's, it's from, look, it's the afternoon school bus when they come by, there's not a problem. Most of them are gone to work. The reason they park out on the street, the majority, my feeling is, it's closest to their front door.
Sure.
If they park where their garages are and their driveway is, it's farther for them to walk. It's plain and simple, it's what it is. And if they have more than one vehicle, that's their problem. You know, if they park one behind the other one, now we want the front one, you know how that goes if you have a double deep garage. It's a hassle.
Does it seem to be an issue for the morning school bus?
No.
People have already gone to work?
Most of them are all gone to work.
And has anyone had a conversation with the landlord?
No, no. And I don't think it would do any good anyway, he doesn't care.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think what you have to do is go back to who brought the complaints forward to council. Clearly, somebody made complaints to you guys in reference to safety concerns there. So there's either safety concerns or there's not. And then what you're gonna have to decide is that people have a legal right to park within front of their residence, whether they're rental or they own them. And you have to make a decision if you think they're, the safety concerns brought forward to council are a legitimate concern or not, and decide what's the best way forward. I don't, I don't know, I didn't see those concerns. I didn't see the citizens' complaints ever brought forward to you guys.
Okay.
I have not heard from anyone, so I don't know if Brent had heard from somebody or...
Yeah, I think it was councilperson Jones has brought this up from complaints in his board.
I've, I've heard complaints, but to tell you the truth, I don't remember who was complaining to me. I'll have to go back and look at some of my emails and get that. But, um, since Brent isn't here tonight, and I think this very specifically impacts his board, I would like to hear his, you know, part of the discussion on this. I don't know if we go ahead and approve this reading, because there'll be two more votes.
Right.
I'm, I, I would suggest that we go ahead and approve the first reading, so we go to the second reading, we can have another fuller discussion and maybe get the opinions of some people who are concerned about the, the, the traffic problems on that street, and be able to have a little bit more information before we make a second and third vote.
Okay, so for the people keeping score at home, if the council votes no, then we drop this and never look at it again. If they vote yes, we have a little short of a month to do more research, hear from more people, and look at other options. All right, any more discussion?
I just have a quick question for clarification. Am I understanding correctly that it's primarily the tenants of the apartment house that are taking up the spaces? And then my follow-up to that would be, am I understanding correctly that there are places for them to park off-street that are just not being used? So, am I correct in thinking, okay, Mr. Meyer, between his driveway and the spaces in front of his house has two or three spots, and... And Joe Smith, who lives in the apartments, might also have two or three cars, but could park those in a lot or some adjacent space that wouldn't have to be in the street? Okay, thank you.
That's a little more...
I don't know if I was supposed to actually ask that.
Well, not really, but that's all right. The issue's more complicated than just a sign or not, so... Any other discussion, questions of any kind, council? You appear ready to vote, Carla?
Rafi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Doen Cal?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passed unanimously, which brings us two weeks to do more research, we'll bring it back for a second reading. That takes us to item 10, Resolution 2493, a resolution approving a proposal from G O E International, a limited liability corporation, to inspect and re-torque the submerged mounting clamp nuts on the inflatable dam. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-93, a resolution approving a proposal from G O E International LLC to inspect and re-torque the submerged mounting clamp nuts on the inflatable dam for an estimated cost of $5,280. Actual cost may increase depending on the results of the inspection.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Other than, I think we can sell tickets to this. Scoop of divers go in the river and with giant wrenches and... Any other discussion? Carla?
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Doen Cal?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Thank you. That passed unanimously and drives us to Resolution 2494. This is a resolution awarding the pavement marking 2024 project to Weichart Contracting of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-94, a resolution awarding the pavement marking 2024 project to Weichart Contracting of Cedar Falls, Iowa for the bid amount of $24,258.82.
Second.
That's a motion and second. Is there any discussion? I hear none, so you appear ready to vote, Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Doen Cal?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That takes us to Resolution 2495. Now, this is a resolution approving the Iowa Department of Transportation Airport state funding application for the reconstructive North Tea Hanger Taxi Lane 2025 project at the Waverly Municipal Airport. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-95, a resolution approving the Iowa Department of Transportation, I D O T Airport State Funding Application for the Reconstruct North Tea Hanger Taxi Lane 2025 Project at the Waverly Municipal Airport. Request eighty-two percent of $330,173 state funding for eligible project costs with the city's portion of $72,477 being funded through the airport project fund balance transfers.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? So this is really giving the airport the ability to apply for a grant to do more work out there?
And this was, there were, there was a larger taxi lane project that got denied, they broke it up into two smaller projects, the first one's already been completed, and this is the second one.
Excellent. Any more discussion? Carla?
Doen Cal?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which takes us to Resolution 2496. A resolution approving an agreement for D O T initiated detour of primary highways onto local roads and authorized the mayor to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 24-96, a resolution approving for agreement for D O T initiated detour of primary highway onto local roads and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement permitting the use of 10th Avenue Southwest and Cedar River Parkway for detour, uh, detour during the Bremer Avenue Bridge reconstruction.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a detour. Any discussion?
I know that the resolution mentions July 1, 2024, is, is, do we think it's going to be somewhere close to that date?
It will not be before the Fourth of July weekend, that I can assure you. After that, it's hard to say who's gonna win it, how long it's gonna be, weather obviously is gonna play a part, but it will not be before the July 4 weekend.
You think it'll be done by September 25?
Maybe. All these things are, again, unknown.
So is this the only detour? I didn't know if they were gonna do a detour around the north.
It's not an official detour.
Okay.
We certainly don't want to route traffic that way intentionally, because it's not built. It's built for that, and that is the official detour to drive it around.
So I've been thinking about how I'm going to get to and from the hospital, from the east side of the river, and I'm wondering, is this going to include any sort of traffic signal at that T intersection with Highway 3 and Cedar River Parkway, which is sometimes already difficult to navigate, difficult to see? And I'm concerned that with more traffic, especially at those busy times of day, it's gonna be a safety issue.
It's not been mentioned so far. We've brought it up multiple times. We can certainly bring it up again, since this is now being approved at some point to get a final formal detour, and we can have a discussion with D O T, but so far it's not been mentioned.
I would appreciate that, because I, I think it's a difficult intersection with difficult visibility. And I'm just thinking about a, not that commuting in Waverly is challenging compared to other cities, but I just think it could be a safety issue.
I suppose my biggest concern is, are there going to be height restrictions on vehicles traveling down that road? Because currently we have some very large trucks that travel down Bremer Avenue, and if they try to go under that Gulf Bridge or Railroad Bridge, um, it may be expensive for everyone involved. So, I mean, I do not believe, I believe there are a number of trucks that go down Bremer Avenue that would not fit under the Gulf Bridge or the Railroad Bridge.
Oh, I think they'll fit. I mean, they already do it now, that, not everybody goes to Bremer Avenue, some take that Parkway now.
Right, but I think that there are some who don't because they would not fit under that. I mean, some of the, I, I'm just, I am concerned about, are we going to, is there going to be height warnings for vehicles traveling down 10th Avenue Southwest?
I mean, I'm sure they'll measure that, but again, I think it's already built for that, to allow for traffic to go under it. I mean, I can't believe in twenty-some years that somebody hasn't gone under it that was questionable, but, yeah, we can confirm it, I just don't know how we would do that. I guess we need a new bridge here anyway someday. But I'll, I'll look at that, I just don't think it's gonna be an issue.
Mr. Lampy?
Pete Lampy, 808 Cedar Lane. Just to address your question on the bridges, those were all built by state standards, that's, so if anybody's coming with an oversized vehicle, they will have, they will be notified by that, by...
Okay, so oversized loads won't fit, but they should know better than to go through there.
They would be, know that the detour would have those bridges in their current legal size.
Okay, well, I know we have a lot of oversized loads that do go down Bremer Avenue, but those are the ones that...
But they're not going under bridges at that point.
Sounds good.
Uh, my concern is, and it's a matter of, the, the state's gonna detour around on 10th Avenue. I live on Cedar Lane. We all know, I just, this is just to reiterate that we're gonna need to watch speed controls involving the traffic on Cedar Lane, because even without telling everybody in town that's, oh, it's shorter by a mile and a half to go around Cedar Lane, uh, we still need to make sure there's X-ray patrol, uh, for talk with speed cameras, and I related an incident to the police chief about an incident last Wednesday, and, uh, that would definitely not be a good thing with X-ray traffic, so, just wanted to...
Yeah, thank you. I think we all share your concern.
I think the other intersection's gonna be where Cedar Lane comes out on the highway with the new school up there. People are gonna be trying to turn left to come into town. That could be a snag spot for sure, and a safety issue.
Sure would be nice to have speed cameras. Working on it. Any other discussion?
Well, I think even if we can't have speed cameras, some of those, like radar signs reminding people how fast you are going is also just helpful. Kind of reminding people, you know, oh, you're in a 25 mile an hour zone and you're doing 40, you know? Want to make sure all your neighbors know how fast you're going.
I just want the chief to know how fast you're going. Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote, Carla?
Here we have Myers.
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Doen Cal?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which will take us to Resolution 2497. This is a resolution approving an agreement for codification services between the City of Waverly and Local Government Professional Services Incorporated, doing business as Iowa Codification. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-97, a resolution approving an agreement for codification services between the City of Waverly and Local Government Professional Services Inc., D B A Iowa Codification of Storm Lake, Iowa, for the base price of $16,000.
Second.
Second. You got a motion on the floor, any discussion?
Can someone tell me what it means to codify the code?
This means that some poor person or group of people has to read all of the code, city code.
And make sure it's consistent?
Yeah, make sure it refers to things that are really there and doesn't refer to...
So when we make small changes, we make small changes over and over again, and there's concern that we might not be consistent, we might not have caught every single place that we should have changed the code, and they're basically going through and making it consistent.
Doesn't that sound like fun?
So they're looking to see whether our codes are consistent, plus consistent with the state? Is that true, or just that our...
To an extent, it's more of, uh, if you make a change today and it replaces something, did it really replace it? Or is it still in the books, contributing it? Or is it reference a piece of code that was taken away ten years ago, but still is not there? When was the last time we had codification this level done, Carla?
Over twenty years.
Or due.
So interesting. So I know we talked about it during the budget hearing and talked about how it might need to be delayed just because of other budget cuts we were making. And so, is this, is part of this gonna be paid in the next fiscal year, or is it less expensive than maybe we anticipated, or...
It's gonna come out of capital improvement fund, since it is a one-time endeavor every, well, twenty years, uh, that's how we're gonna end up going for it. I don't know if you have any comment on that, Carla?
Um, I actually feel like it's budgeted in the city clerk's portion of the budget.
That's what says in the source of funds.
Yeah, and I feel like the zoning portion of the codification was actually put off for a year or so.
So it's not all of the codification, just...
From the acts that we had.
Right.
Just, that's my recollection.
Okay, thanks.
And it, it does make sure that all the sightings of the Iowa code are updated as well, and so forth, so.
Let me remove chapter 58 today for taxis and limousines. You know, is there a remnant from something else from twenty years ago?
Is there something else that refers to that section that we've just removed?
So they just clean it all up, make sure it all exists as it should, and it's good to do that.
I just hope all the corrections we could vote on block, I don't have to do each correction. That'd be a long meeting. We'll see. All righty, uh, we need a roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Doen Cal?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which drives us to the reports from boards and commissions. Uh, you have Waverly P and C Commission report in front of you. I don't see any questions. That would take us to staff updates.